Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is December 14, 2021, and it's 9:34 a.m., and this meeting is hereby called to order. And I'm going to ask the clerk if she would please call the roll and establish quorum.
Member Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. And would you mind reading the Metro Cable announcement?
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 17th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask Supervisor Natoli, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, be happy to. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This morning is our last meeting before our Christmas break, and so I just wanted to take a moment to give a special thank you to, not only to the board for all of their help for me during my year as Chair, but also to our county executive, our county council, who's always there for us, and also the deputy executive team, right down to every single employee in the county. I don't know, for those who may not realize, I think there's over 10,000 or 11,000 employees at the county right now. And they manage all kinds of things behind the scenes before we get to these meetings, and they go, they do so much to prepare the agendas and to explain things to us, and they manage communications between the public for new projects, they manage problems, they manage emergencies. And while all this is going on behind the scenes, and while we're the policymakers and oftentimes the last to hear about it when we get to this meeting, it was the county staff that really made it all work throughout the year. And so I wanted, I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for your extra efforts and for all of your help and for your understanding and patience with, with us for your being a good sport sometimes when it changes up, all the work you, you did. And, and I want to just say thank you for your commitment to the county and as we wind up 2021 and look forward to a great new year in '22, I wish all the best to all the county staff and your families during the Christmas holidays. And I also want to do, give a special shout out to all the citizens who have taken time out of their busy schedule to be active and watching and reading and, you know, no matter, you know, what your, you know, philosophy or ideology, it's so important that you're engaged, and we really appreciate your help here from the dais. And so best wishes to everyone. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and, and read the meeting announcement. "The Board of Supervisors encourages the public, public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with the directives of the County State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, this meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or shield while inside the county's administrative building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in order of the in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside chambers or hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside chambers, and overflow seating is available in hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait for your turn to make your comment. If you're making a public comment by telephone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when is the best time to call to be placed in the queue or make your public comment. You may be on hold for, for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer the calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need to, if you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act for, or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may be, you may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures." And at this time, the clerk has some announcements for us.
Good morning. For your consent matters, items 1 through 41. Item 14, you're introducing ordinance amending Chapter 22.2, Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code, related to extension of time for subdivision maps, waive full reading and continue to January 11th, 2022 for adoption. And then item 15 is the Housing Trust Fund Fee Update, introducing ordinance amending Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code to update the fees on non-residential construction to fund very low-income housing, waive full reading and continue to January 11th, 2022 for adoption. And on item 34, there is a correction we will add to the action summary, but you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of Sacramento County. And that concludes my announcements.
Okay. And I'll turn it to the board for comments.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I would like to pull for discussion items 16, 23, and 27. We can keep, keep them on consent for now, but I want to have some conversation around both, all three of those items, please. And you may have speakers on some of those as well, so. On 27, okay.
Item number 16, adopt resolution authorizing the execution of the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve, Preserve Protection and Management Agreement with the Center for Natural Lands Management in the amount of 525,000, beginning upon execution and ending on December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I had a chance to speak briefly with the county executive, I've talked with our parks and open space director, Liz Bellis, about what's before us today. And I want to raise a couple of issues, one being that the initial management plan was approved by this, by this board back in 2015, in February of 2015. We're now approaching seven years since we adopted the management plan and put forth tasks that relate to both long-term management of the wetlands preserve, but also there were some milestone requirements that were in the initial plan that was approved by the board. Actually, the plan was developed in 2013, so we're approaching about a nine-year stage since the plan was actually put forth for consideration. And the concern I have is not so much regarding the contract, but I think the slow pace of the work. I've heard from folks, maybe other board members have over time regarding concerns about both the development but implementation of the invasive plant, management plan portion of this, and then obviously we have proved, and I know COVID had some interruption as related to the public access plan. Those are all mentioned, though, in the document that was approved by the board in 2015. And we're now paying over $150,000 a year to the preserve manager, who is responsible in, for development of the invasive plant management plan, our plant treatment plan, and I know Parks is administering, in coordination with the preserve manager, the public access plan. And as recently as session, a couple of weeks ago, I know I mentioned the, the dedication and timing for the endowment for the long term, the preserve is the county's in perpetuity and the need to do that. And this was all talked about in a five-to-10-year timeframe in the plan. And we're almost a full seven years in, we haven't yet completed the invasive plant treatment plan. We're still in the midst of doing the public access plan, and I understand that that's, that work is continuing. And we're paying $150,000 to a preserve manager to, in some cases, obviously check the boxes for the regulators. So I guess what I wanted to, to ask this morning, I was certainly of the county executive, and I could invite Liz if she wanted to come forward, but I think there needs to be some milestones in this contract. When it was last before us, I voiced some of the same concerns at the time, and we're now, you know, three years past the last time this would be for us. And so I guess I'm going to ask that we build in some milestones for delivering the invasive plant treatment plan to this board for his consideration. I'd like to see that before, you know, fall of next year. And I also, as I mentioned maybe just a week ago, I believe we need to have, you know, a board discussion about where we stand with the calculations for the long-term endowment. And I think that, you know, that's, one, I know it's the county's responsibility, but I think it's well past time that we have some additional conversation. We've certainly had, since we first had this before us, we've had new board members join us, and I think it's important to, to know about the scope and the, the responsibility that goes with that. So I'm prepared to support a one-year extension with some opportunity for additional extensions, two one-year extensions, but there needs to be some clear milestones. And I certainly put that responsibility on the preserve manager to, to deliver that, but also obviously our, our county staff for the role that we play with this in, in both economic development and Parks and Open Space are a part of this ongoing work. And so without going into any greater detail this morning, I just, I, I think the milestone deliverables need to be called out here and, you know, as part of holding the county accountable as an organization, but certainly those that are performing this work are responsible for performing that work. So I don't know, Anne, you got any comments around that? I know we had a chance to speak briefly about this, so.
Yes, and I think that Ms. Bellis is prepared to do that, but I want to confirm that by maybe having her come down.
Morning, Liz.
Good morning, Supervisor Frost, members of the board. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. I've had some extensive conversations with the executive management of CLNM, and we are happy to put together those milestones to have the invasive plant management plan completed by the end of calendar year 2022. And as you mentioned, we are working on the public access plan. I'm pleased to report that I've hired my senior planner for my staff, so we are getting underway on that in January. So that's absolutely not a problem. And then we can definitely do a one-year extension with two extensions, one-year extensions after that, that would be absolutely workable.
Okay. And, and just on that point, typically the one-year extensions where we delegate the authority, but I think with the milestone and, and having that invasive plant treatment plan, and then obviously what comes behind that, which is going to be work, and whether it's a grazing regime, it's mowing, it's, you know, chemical treatment, I know they talk about prescribed burns, I'm not so sure that's a very good idea in proximity to the homes and so forth, but I'll, again, I'll leave that to our, you know, to our, our management. I guess I would ask, maybe we could time this so that if they're going to have it done by calendar year 2022, that we could have the, the invasive, basically a weed management plan, presentation to the board, obviously, and then maybe have the contract extension before us at that time. So I guess I, you know, I want to tie this a little more closely. We had this conversation, and you weren't, Director Mr. Leatherman was at the time, a different county executive as well. But again, maybe there's been progress over the last three years, but we're well into a period of time, estimated this five to 10 years, when we should have had some of this work done. And again, I understand there may be some reasons why some of it's taken longer than, than not, but, and again, I think it ties back then to what we're, our long-term obligation, again, which isn't just a Parks obligation, it's a county obligation for that land. And I've heard the discussion many times about what is the par? Well, it's, you know, somewhere between probably seven and $12 million that we're going to need to endow for the ongoing maintenance and, and restoration of those lands out there. And I just think it's really important that this work has a timeliness, a sense of timeliness, and I won't say urgency, because we're well past urgent, but, okay. So I guess I would ask, you know, as a part of this, that we do the, do the one year and that, you know, we would provide for two one-year extensions, but that before that second, before that first extension would be considered, that we actually have a presentation to this board that is deliverable, that was going to be called out for in the contract, so.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, all right. So, Madam Chair, that's all I had on that. I don't know if other board members have any questions, but I do think it's important. I appreciate Ms. Bellis responding, and with that caveat, I would be prepared to support item 16, I know, and leave it on the consent calendar, so, thanks.
Okay. Item number 23, Sacramento County, acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, approved Contract 4540, North Vineyard Station Open Space Preserve Trail and Land Scaping Project, Elder Creek Phase 1B, and specifications and allow project advertisement bids to be received on January 20, 2022.
The question I have on this is, this is, again, concurrent with work that will provide for both the accommodation of drainage runoff, certainly in a fairly large floodplain, but we're going to be doing the, the landscaping, and there's a, as I understand, there's a five-year monitoring period, I see Michael Peterson coming up. And during that time, is it the water agency's responsibility then to provide for plant replacement, for irrigation repairs? Because the trail obviously is going in, so you're going to have some usage, and I know Southgate is the long-term caretaker in responsibility, but what happens in that five-year period once the, the, and it's a pretty sizable wetlands establishment here, you know, we've got about 16 acres, I think, in total, including trails and such, so I'm curious, Michael.
Yeah, Michael Peterson, Water Resources. Yeah, so the agency is responsible for ensuring that that landscaping takes, if you will, and is established within that five-year period. And if things die or irrigation's broken, then it's, then we have the responsibility to bring someone in to fix that, or, you know, contractor landscaper to, to, to replace anything that, that doesn't survive and to make sure that irrigation is, is functional.
What about the trail maintenance?
The trail maintenance is part of Southgate.
And they take that on right from the get-go?
Yeah, we, we won't be taking on maintenance of the trail, but the, the full easement is transferred over after the five-year establishment period, but we would not be maintaining the trail as a, as a park entity.
Okay, so they have, so from the get-go, they take on the trail, ultimately they'll have the vegetation responsibility.
Yes.
But initially then, the vegetation, and so what about for litter, security and so forth, trash pickup, whose responsibility is that?
That would, that would still be, fall under my, specifically things like that, I, I would have to refer to the agreement, but the, we would, we would be handling maintenance of the corridor as far as hydraulics, ensuring that landscaping is in place, and I would, I would expect that it is Southgate that would do that, but we can get back to.
Okay, yeah, I think it's important to spell out, and, and the reason I raise this is that, separate apart with what's before us this morning, been working with some folks off of Hedge Avenue on a, on a zoning issue, but one of the concerns expressed by some of the residents who have a concern about a particular occupied property in that vicinity is that there's, you know, even with, out the establishment and the improvements, that there's been some environmental damage caused by intrusion into that area, and they were concerned because of, you know, some of the activities, I don't know if it's motorized vehicles, or it's, you know, equestrian use, or, you know, other types of, but the folks have been entering where there are already fences, fences have been cut, because there's a border established, when we acquired that right away through there. And so I guess I wanted to, to raise that because, you know, absent what we're going to be considering here today, there's already concern about activity down there. And so I do think that coordination, both with Southgate, who obviously do have, you know, patrol services and, you know, regular business, you know, water agency's not in, necessarily in the business of sending out or calling, you know, a ranger or sheriff's officer to, to administer that, and that's why I'm concerned about it, because again, this, we're going to begin to open this area up, there are private properties adjacent, but it, you know, will have, you know, public access, and with the development that's going on out there, obviously, we'll see, I'm sure, a good, you know, a lot of positive use of the trail system. So I wanted to raise that, and so I guess I would be interested, I'm certainly not going to hold up this, I think that it's an important improvement, but that, you know, we have some understanding about who's going to have what responsibility while we have the five-year monitoring establishment period, but certainly, you know, what happens aside from the trail in the area, and if there are security concerns, if there are fences that are cut, is that something that the water?
Well, any, this is a well-established, it's a problem on nearly any fence, pre-corridor, and it's, it's, it's impossible to completely eliminate, but anytime our folks are out there, our field staff are out there to do, you know, either inspection, preseason inspection or regular maintenance, things like damaged fencing are identified and those become a service request or a work order for us to do.
Okay, so, so neighbors would, would call?
They could call, they should call 311. That's, that's what they should do, and then that would be filtered down to us, it's drainage quarter, it'll come to us, and then we can determine whether we have a piece of that or if it's something that we need to have Southgate come in or, but if they go through 311, then it will be coordinated, that's the best way to coordinate it.
Right, and I'm providing a heads-up because we're going to put a, a lot of money and effort into, into doing this, and there's already concern, we haven't done anything on that, yeah.
And it's, and it's, I think it's, you know, it's valid, the concern's valid, again, we have this kind of intrusion issue, anytime we're trying to have an open space balance against.
Right.
Adjacent development.
Yeah, and again, we're talking about existing parcels that are ag-residential, but the folks were concerned that they're using the Hedge Avenue where it dead ends on the north side of the, the Elder Creek Corridor there, that there's already intrusion through, you know, maybe private properties. But again, I'll just, just, you know, alert you to that, and if I could, you know, have some clarification as to kind of what that delineation responsibility is, that'd be, that would be helpful.
We can do that.
Okay, good, that's, okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair, on that, and I think you have some speakers on 27, so we can hold that if you want to until we take public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
And we also have public comment on a couple of other items. Do any of the other board members have comments prior to going to public comment? Supervisor Desmond? Oh, yes.
Just real quick comment on item 14.
Item number 14, oh, this is the introduction of the ordinance amending Chapter 22.2, Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code, relating to the extension of time for subdivision maps.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I just want to thank county staff for, for bringing this to us. I mean, this was something that was requested by the, the development community as a way to, to help them get more, well, just one small step to help get more housing supply in Sacramento County, and this brings us into conformance with the six-year period under state law, and I think this will just create some additional opportunities that we need here. And this is exactly the kind of thing I think we need to be evaluating, these, these small things that will make Sacramento County more competitive in terms of attracting more, more housing projects in the county. So I just want to thank staff for this item, and of course, I'll be supporting this today.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And at this time, we will go to public comments for consent.
Please transfer the first call. I believe this caller is commenting on 25 and 27.
Okay. They can have two minutes for each item.
Okay. Hi caller, this is the clerk. Are you calling for items 25 and 27? Hello? Caller? Hello? Please transfer the next caller for 27. Sorry, the line is not ringing.
It's okay.
Okay, they're trying to get the callers back on the line. They're saying it's ringing busy, but I don't see how that's possible. Sorry. Hi caller. Caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, are you calling on item 25?
Um, 25 and 27.
Okay, you have two minutes for each, for each, for each item. Please start your public comment.
Okay. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, this is Liz with, Liz Blum with Decarcerate Sacramento. Starting with item number 25, just have a question of how many people in Sacramento County are being incarcerated for breaking the rules of their supervision? These violations of probation can include not being able to pay court-related fines and fees, getting a traffic ticket, using drugs or alcohol, failing to report, address changes, or not being able to charge your ankle monitor, and that can lead to disproportionately harsh incarceration sentences. A recent Human Rights Watch report documents that the root causes these violations are often a lack of resources and services, unmet health, health needs, and racial bias. A report also, the report also draws attention to marked racial disparities in who is subjected to supervision and how and authorities enforce it. Many people that I have personally interviewed recently in Sacramento County jails also said that lack of stable housing impedes their ability to comply with supervision conditions, often resulting in reincarceration. Housing instability and homelessness often contribute to physical and mental health issues, making it harder for people to hold down jobs, attend supervision-mandated meetings and classes, and regularly update their supervision officer on where they live. A Georgia defense, a defense attorney once said, "Probation is like a prison sentence outside of jail. You walk around with a rope tied to your leg to the prison door. Anything can lead to revocation." Prioritizing punishment does not work. Probation imposes burdensome conditions imposed without providing any non-punitive resources. The board has full jurisdiction over the probation department. You all can require that the department publish detailed data, accessible, detailed accessible data on racial demographics and how the pre-trial funding is being spent. The board can and should ensure that 2.4 million in AB 1869 revenue, new legislation related to.
You have 15 seconds.
Thank you. Fines and fees, and significant portions of the $60 million in annual AB 109 funding get earmarked for public defender-led pre-trial support programs and other community-based services. That concludes my comment on item 25. Should I start with item 27?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So the public defender's pre-trial program is not complimentary to probation. Contrary to what the item language says, they are independent, and they must remain independent. The public defender wrote the federal grant in 2018, before SB 10 was passed by the legislature, well before probation's pre-trial pilot. And today, the courts are giving the public defender's office funding to pick up the pieces of prevalent probation's failing pre-trial program, which the courts, courts themselves recognize that people are on for too long without any support that they need. The Sacramento County probation devoted 84% of its original grant in 2019 to additional probation staff, 80% of whom were armed officers. Other top budget lines included drug testing at 4% and GPS monitors at another 4%. Community-based services have yet to be funded significantly after being prom- Community-based services have yet to be funded significantly after being promised $150,000 a year in 2019, while the Public Defender's Office continues to allocate, allocate significant portions of their budget to services, not just staff time. The board continues to wrestle with how you can meet the May's consent decree and decrease the jail populations. According to the most recent sheriff's data, 79% of the jail population is currently being incarcerated pretrial and preconviction. Effective, sustainable pretrial programs are a huge piece of this and something you can take urgent action on today that would have a significant impact. The county needs to make a commitment to continuing to fund this nationally recognized program and the Public Defender's Office more broadly. I'm requesting today that the board ensure that this grant funding from the Sacramento Superior Court remains with the Public Defender's Pretrial Program and commit to continuing the funding for additional positions through the county's general fund. Probation's program does not have social workers, so this funding should not include them or name them. And the wording of this agenda item shows that continued, the continued dangerous co-optation of the Public Defender's Pretrial Program by probation. Please remove the misleading language. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more caller for item 25. Please send the next caller. Hi caller. Caller?
Yes.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I'm with Decarcerate Sacramento. We're calling today to ask the board, I mean, I'm calling today to ask the board to hold off on this item until further discussion can be had. I think the end goal is to actually reject this funding because the truth is, is we've mobilized against this money before. The truth is, is our probation has not fulfilled any of the promises, let alone give, I'm sorry, let alone has not come close to tackling or accomplishing the task put forth by them, by the BOS and the pretrial pilot program. We were promised data, we were promised community money, we were promised transparency, we were promised a lower jail population from probation, and honestly, we haven't received any of it. We haven't received any racialized data. We haven't received any transparency. We've, I mean, I'm trying to understand why the data on the website is extremely misleading and it really only seems like a handful of people, scaled to the amount of people inside the local jail, only handful of people are being helped by this program every year, or every, every month. We have community money that was never given to, to this community from probation. It's quite a few, it's like a couple hundred thousand dollars that like just keeps getting ignored, keeps getting used. We know that there, that 84% of the money that was given to them was all used for armed staff and probation officers. We also know that our jail population is actually, I mean, the pretrial population inside the jail has risen since COVID. It used to be about 60%, now we're looking about 80% of our jail being pretrial inside of our jail, which again speaks volumes to a failing pretrial program. What we know and why it's failing is in why it is that people are spending too much time on their probation, on their pretrial, again, pretrial, preinnocent, right? Pre, like they're fucking innocent and this is, and they already have, like level three on this program or higher is formal probation. So if you're living on formal probation, pretrial, and you're living on this program for six months to a year, what I'm hearing is that probation's one service of surveillance is not able to do anything for you. And why are we going to call back and talk about item 27? Because what we're learning is that now the courts are having to contract with Public Defender's Office, which is a completely separate program launched before you gave all of this money to probation, a community-driven alternatives to incarceration program, but they're having to now contract with, with the Public Defender's Office to come in and clean up their sloppy ass mess.
You have 10 seconds.
Are continuing to allow to fund. Voters on this state have rejected this kind of money, have rejected these kinds of pilots. Yet here in Sacramento, we are keeping them sustained. We need to take that money away from probation. We need to fully fund through AB 109 and AB 19, gosh, I can't remember the other two numbers, and fully fund the Public Defender's Program and get rid of probation. Get probation out of pretrial.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Driver of mass reincarceration. And I'll call back on 27. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more caller for item 25. Please transfer the caller. Hi caller. Hello, caller?
Hello?
Please start, please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I am a licensed clinical psychologist in private practice. I'm a community mental health advocate. I'm also a resident of District 2, Supervisor Kennedy's district. So I'm calling in regards to item 25. I'm calling to urge you to reject the 2.1 million in state funding and remove probation from pretrial. Decreasing the jail population requires fully funded, community-based, pretrial services that prioritize care, not officers. And having probation involved in, in pretrial is just more policing, it's more surveillance, and it reinforces the recidivism and leads to the very, very high numbers of individuals that are currently housed in the Sacramento County main jail. It does nothing to promote public safety, it does nothing to address racial inequity, and just a reminder that this board did a vote on a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis last November. So doing what you can in your positions of power and leadership to remove probation from the pretrial program would definitely be in line with that. So instead, please invest this money in the Public Defender's Pretrial Program, which not only saves the county money, it actually helps people get their needs met so they don't end up in the jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller. Hello caller?
Yes.
Are you commenting on item 25?
Yes, 25 and 27.
Okay, please start your public comment. You will have two minutes for each item.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm calling because I'm really concerned and I really care about people in this community. And it's well-known that probation is a driver of, of mass reincarnation, reincarceration. If only, if only that were true, we'd get more chances. Thank you. But, but really, probation departments, including the Sacramento probation department, are harmful to our communities by design. It's actually their job to criminalize, surveil, and set up people to fail. When you're on probation, simple mistakes and structural barriers can easily land you in jail. A battery problem with an ankle monitor, or missed appointment due to transportation, childcare, or health issues, or dozens of other technical violations that actually have nothing to do with public safety. This is a, you know, a churning factory of getting people in trouble and in the system and just staying there. And I know this firsthand because a loved one of mine is actually in prison right now and about to, about to parole. And, and he's terrified that anything he does, you know, that might be, you know, a late appointment or anything, and that's parole, that's a little different, but it's the same kind of a thing. This isn't setting people up for success to get, you know, on a good path. This is setting people up to, you know, be stuck in these, you know, churns of incarceration. And there's currently over 15,000 people on adult probation in SAC County. This additional funding with, that we're talking about would widen the net of the carceral system and actually increase the number of people eligible for surveillance and detention. This one's counter to the board's stated commitment of reducing the jail population.
You have 15 seconds.
We can't allow this. So the probation's pretrial program also goes against the will of California voters. This pilot program was a response to SB 10, and it is essentially the same as the system proposed by Prop 25 with its use of biased risk assessment tools and unchecked power to probation departments. In November of 2020, we California voters overwhelmingly rejected that system.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I'll wrap it up for 25, yeah. So what we desperately need is a flexible pretrial service with dollars that fund community-based services which are empirically proven to be more cost-effective and actually keep us safer. So the presumption of innocence is a basic right.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I am, yeah. Basic rights provided by our constitution and the county's proposed expansion of probation's pretrial pilot is a threat to this fundamental constitutional right.
Thank you.
Shall I go ahead with 27 now, or do you want me to?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. So I demand that the Board of Supervisors, you guys, ensure that this grant funding remains with the Public Defender's Pretrial Program and commit to continuing the funding for additional positions through the county's general fund. So the probation program does not have social workers even, and this funding should not even include or name them. The wording of the agenda item shows the continued dangerous cooperation, well, optation of the Public Defender's Pretrial Program by probation. Now I demand that you remove that misleading language. The courts are giving the Public Defender's Office funding to pick up the pieces of probation's failing pretrial program. However, the Public Defender's Pretrial Support Project supports the county's goals of reducing the jail population, promoting public safety, and addressing racial inequity within the criminal justice system. SAC County jails are 38% black and 70% people of color. By providing early intervention, the Public Defender's Pretrial Support Project seeks to identify and implement solutions to eliminate institutional, structural, and systemic racial inequities in all community served, services provided by the county. As in the Board of Supervisors November 16, 2020 Resolution Declaring Racism a Public Health Crisis, this task is the county to do so. So that's really in line with what your resolution was, and so it's really important that you stick to that. And knowing that the probation's pretrial services cost a dollar for every six cents for the Public Defender's Pretrial Support Program, that's a way to do it in a really, you know, financially efficient way. The Public Defender's Office continues to allocate significant portions of their budget to services, not just staff time. $4,000 of this grant request
You have 15 seconds.
Is set to go to 1,000 bus passes for clients, which would go a long way in really supporting community members in, in, you know, getting on their feet and being productive members, rather than, you know, trying to recriminalize or criminalize people. So probation is really robbing community. We demand that you restore these promised community funds now.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. I believe we're moving to item 27. We do not have any more callers for 25. Hello caller? Hello caller?
Yes.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes. You're commenting on item 27, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please start your public comment.
Okay. Hello?
You may proceed with your public comment.
Okay. Hello? Okay, yes, this is Christina. I'm with Community Healer, a new nonprofit. Also, I was a big homie with Occupied Love Worldwide and Edutainment Pros who work with the youth. I was, I just wanted to kind of speak about, you know, probation and their, the way they are, you know, with, you know, probation has reached out to me. I work within the community, I work with a lot of organizations, and probation at one point, you know, reached out to me and was asking me for, you know, some resources to help them. So the fact that they're asking community for resources, and this is a while ago, a particular probation officer, not just anybody, you know, a lot of the money should have been allocated towards community, you know, nonprofits, community should be able to help in this situation. The fact that probation, even though they're asking for our help, they're not utilizing it as, as our help. They're utilizing it as them doing the, you know, having the resources or being those to be effective. Probation has come to my house since I work with a lot of youth in the music program and building young entrepreneurs. They have terrorized me and my family, my daughters. I lost my son three years ago from an accidental shooting, and his, there was bullets still in his closet. So probation came to look for my brother, and they searched my house and found the bullets, and then arrest my daughter because she was sleeping in that room, even though she's not tall enough to reach that closet. They took her to jail. We fought that case and she was let go with no charges filed against her. They've come to my house several times, including, including like a gang. It was gang task force, it was the sheriff.
You have 15 seconds.
And probation harassing us to where eventually I got kicked out of my home, you know, and just attacked several times, just always getting pulled over, just harassed. And I was one of the 84 people that was arrested in the protest. You know, I'm here for the community and probation does not work. They have terrorized our communities. So please think again about how this funding is being spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, oh, and that concludes your callers for item 27. Mr. Niotoli, did you still have comments on 27?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'll read that into the record. Authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with Superior Court of California. Oh, hold on a moment, we might have one more caller. Hello caller?
You have other public comments?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, could you hold on a moment? You can start, I'll have you start your public comment. Are you commenting on item 27?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, hold on. Authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Superior Court of California, County of Sacramento to receive grant funding in the amount of $392,853 for the period of December 15, 2021 through December 31, 2022, to provide supplemental social work services to support the Superior Courts and probation departments' pretrial project. Approval of a salary resolution amendment adding two FTE limited-term human services social worker positions. Authorization for the public defender to execute grant-related amendments and an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $196,426. And caller, would you please start your public comment? You have two minutes.
Yes, hi again, this is Mackenzie Wilson with Decarcerate Sacramento. I guess I'll start off with saying that this title is misleading, extremely misleading, and probation should have nothing to do with it. What you are hearing is that the courts are now contracting with the Public Defender's Office and their separate pretrial support project, again, launched before Sacramento gave money to probation for this pilot. It is nationally recognized. You don't hear our local probation pretrial program being nationally recognized. So completely separate programs. I would like to commend the Public Defender's Office for being able to step up and being ready to support the lack of services that probation has been providing to this county for two, for now, two years through this pilot, or actually, yeah, 19 to 21, and now going on three years because, and I want to talk about the differences, right? Like what we're seeing here is about $400,000 going into Public Defender's Office to, and they call it supplement. No, 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 this is not supplement. This is to clean up the mess of probation's failing pretrial program to ensure that people have access to services. I brought this up last time. Probation has one service, one service and one service only, and that is to surveil. Afterwards, they have no resources. They do, they are not social workers, they do not have social workers, they do not have legal research assistance, they do not have any of these things that are coming in through the public They do not have any of these things that are coming in through the Public Defender's Office to offer and support with mental health services, housing, community support, even bus passes. I cannot believe that it's the public, I mean, I'm actually super juiced about it because we support this pretrial program through the Public Defender's Office, but it's the Public Defender's Office who's going to use their $400,000 to make sure people have bus passes when we just gave probation $2.1 million in the item before. Do you understand that like the Public Defender's-
You have 15 seconds.
Yes. Long story short, probation is trying to co-opt the work of the Public Defender's Office here in Sacramento County. And so when we come time to like, to begin to talk about which pilots and which programs to fund, we hope that we are going to reject probation's pretrial program and that you 100% put money and support into the Public Defender's Program as well as actual housing, actual education, actual food, actual healthcare-
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Actual mental health services. Yeah. I mean, this, these two items alone let you know that you're budgeting and that your, the values that you say that you hold for wanting to decarcerate and support this community are not being reflected in your budget. Have a great day.
Thank you.
And that concludes your comments for item 27.
Madam Chair, if I could ask, the clerk says we've had comments on item 25. Could you read, could I ask that be read in? So I wanted to offer a couple of questions on that.
Item 25 is to authorize, authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Superior Court of California, County of Sacramento to accept funding from the Judicial Counsel of California for the probation pretrial release program in the amount of $2.1 million retroactive to the term of July 1, 2021, through December 31, 2022.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, please.
Just on item 25, with correspondence and certainly commentary received this morning, we've had some certainly ongoing discussion regarding this project. But I, what I wanted to ask about, and it was incorporated into some of the written correspondence, was that my recollection, and it was kind of prompted by what was in the submitted written communication, is that we were going to, as a part of that grant, work with some community-based providers as well. And I see Bruce nodding his head. Now, what was pointed out here is that we've yet to do that. It wasn't, it was a small apportionment of the overall budget. It was $150,000. I think it may have been some AB 109 money that was talked about that would, and again, not the last call, but the call before, talked about some of the community programming that she's been involved in, and if there are any number out there. So I guess I'm curious, Bruce, where are we with that? And I know that there was talked about because of COVID, but, you know, life hasn't stopped because of COVID. We've just had to make adjustments, and we still have the need, as, you know, as pointed out certainly in both of the staff reports, but in the conversations this morning. So I guess I'm curious, where are we with those allocations, which would be an annualized allocation? And so I trust it would be during the life of that grant, and if not, correct me, so.
Yeah, that's a very important question, Supervisor. Actually, with your indulgence, Chief Yarber is actually on the line.
Oh, is he? Okay, I didn't realize.
And we also have Amanda Benson, our interim public defender, on the line who can speak to number 27. They can talk about how they're working together and specifically to the questions that you're posing, so.
Okay, okay.
Chief Yarber, if you could chime in, please.
Yes, good morning, Chair Frost, members of the board, Supervisor Natoli, thank you for the question. As it relates to those supports and going out to contract, we're actually in negotiations now to name a provider to address some of those things such as housing, transportation, et cetera. You may recall when this came up during budget, we talked about the uncertainty with the program and really stalling some of those efforts to select and identify and select someone to help us here with support. And so it put us really behind the curve with regards to timing, but that process is underway. And again, go for it.
So Chief Yarber, then, did you issue an RFP? Or obviously, are any normal organizations that may provide some or maybe holistically all of what was being requested, but so without, again, breaching any process you're in, I'm just, I'm guessing, now you've piqued my curiosity as to how we sought out or were seeking out those that would assist in those community-based services that you just referenced.
Sure. So to my understanding, we utilize what's called an RFI, a Request for Information, to identify local community-based organizations interested in working with us.
Okay, and so that was, and that was done through your department or through?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct. I believe utilizing, I think, general services. I think the announcement may have been posted there as well.
Would it be fair to ask how many responders you had to that?
I think I'm able to share. I believe there were four, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, all right. And I guess just lastly, on that point, do you anticipate, if you're in the process, when would you anticipate that we would have somebody under contract to then begin providing those services?
So as it relates to establishing the contract itself, we could be just a couple of weeks out.
Okay. And I referenced it a moment ago, but is that an annualized amount, or was it only the $150,000 of the total grant proceeds?
So I think it was 150 or maybe even 125 that had been mentioned by former chief seal, again, not knowing the future of the program, you know, that those funds have been set aside to address this need, and we hope to, you know, again, support those, support those efforts given, or I should say, should the program continue into the future. And so currently, we're asking for permission to expend the existing grant funds. Going forward, obviously, we'll be including supportive pretrial in our budget, and so should the program continue, certainly, we would want those supports to continue.
Okay. If I could, Madam Chair, and I know you've got, thank you, Chief Yarber. I don't know if anybody else had questions for the chief on this, but I wanted to offer a comment that relates to both this and 27. You know, when it comes to those services, and certainly I'll speak to 27, but just in light of my question on, and some of the comments posed on item 25, that it seems to me, and again, I would maybe turn to Ann, and I know we're still in the midst of looking to someone to, you know, again, be the bridge between our, you know, law and justice, but certainly social services and the whole realm of services that will help us to hopefully address, you know, needs in the community, but also issues that relate to, obviously, those that are in custody. And what I wanted to point out here, and I think it relates to 27, is that we have a program that the grant is for one year, but as we're working our way through establishing programs that, and, you know, building programs that hopefully address not only the pretrial population, but certainly address some of the serious challenges that folks face that are in those respective, in that respective population, that I would see as being very key and critical to sustaining that. And the staff report on item 27 said that if the grant goes away, those positions go away. You know, that's been the county's longstanding policy, and we've had this conversation, we've talked about budget priorities and certainly, and you've heard it many times even before you were county executive. And I guess in my view, if we know we have a successful program, doesn't mean that any program is necessarily immune to budget reductions or budget considerations in any period of time, but if we're showing results, and likewise, if we even on the probation side, we've yet to put all those services into that package that was referenced by Chief Yarber, it seems to me then, it's not a matter of question. You know, it certainly, it would require us to pick them up after the grant expired, but if it's part of the successful program, and it helps us address a myriad of issues that relate to, you know, the jail, and not just the consent decree, but trying to, you know, work through these, folks that are in either the juvenile justice or criminal justice system, that we have these services available. And I guess I feel really strongly that, you know, obviously, we're benefiting by having grant funds, but it goes beyond that. It goes beyond, you know, what is it we want to do and how do we want to do it in order to best serve, you know, the people of this county, but certainly those that are, you know, involved in the justice system in a way that, you know, it's beyond just the justice piece of it, but social services, housing, things that Chief Yarber represents. We've had many discussions in these chambers in the past months about that. So I guess my, the question I pose is that, again, we're not predetermining what we're going to do in any given budget year, but that these positions ought to be solidified. If we know that having the social service component and having bus passes and assuming that, you know, proves itself out, which I trust it will, then why would we just say, well, next December 31, 2022, if the money's not there, those positions go away? And that's mid-year. I mean, that's mid-budget year. So I guess I'd like to provide some certainty behind direction we give here today, that we're going to sustain that program and do it in a way that, you know, doesn't provide that uncertainty mid-year, mid-budget year, this time next year. So I don't know, Ann, maybe you or Bruce want to respond to that, but.
Sure, thank, thank you. As you know, we have, the county has a longstanding policy of not backfilling external funding resources such as grants. You reaffirmed that policy when we brought the budget policies last week. However, it did say-
Yes.
That, you know, under certain circumstances, we'll do that. I do think it's premature to designate these positions as permanent positions because we do not yet know what the fiscal picture will be next year. However, I do agree that these programs are successful and really important, and we need to continue to fund anything that continues to keep the jail population down or continue to reduce it. So I think as written today, it is appropriate, but knowing that it is important and we need to do everything we can to support people being safely out of jail.
Well, and maybe I can put at least an asterisk behind this for today's purposes, and that is, is that I would like to have these positions considered in our budget for the '22, '23 year. And again, they'll still be grant-funded for six months under this particular scenario, but otherwise, it gets off budget cycle. That doesn't mean you couldn't bring something, or this board couldn't bring something back off-cycle, but I think to the points being made here, and again, to our efforts that are concerted, and yet we're, and we're still trying to bring focus to, you know, exactly how we're going to approach this, working with, again, the various agencies, but I think we recognize, at least this board member does, and I think others do as well, that, you know, there are other challenges in people's lives besides what got them into the justice system, and that if we can help address that, and we can hopefully address, you know, the jail population, but have a quality of life that we would all, I think, aspire to for ourselves, but for our families, and certainly for our friends and neighbors and our community members. And so I just think that's key. We're talking about, you know, two positions here. Obviously, they have costs attached to them, but I think the work, and the word complementary was talked about here today, I think that they're not just complementary, they're probably essential to what's already, you know, proven to, you know, be successful as a part of a grant that the public defender's received, and obviously, the work, I think, that could complement what the probation department does and in what Chief Yarber spoke to. So again, I just see this as being key pieces, and, you know, we get snippets of this as we talk about budget items, but to me, it's a part of the, you know, the very important, I think, and strategic approach that we need to take to these. And again, you know, there are costs associated, but there are costs associated in not doing them or not having these positions, and I think they could be far greater than, you know, making sure that we sustain good, solid programs and, you know, build upon success. And so I just, I guess I would put that as a note, and I'll be watching for it, and I'm sure you'll check good notes, you and Bruce and others, that we need to, you know, have discussion around sustained funding for, and maybe there's even additional considerations. Again, I would leave the door open to that, you know, that if there's more need in by funding these positions and bringing folks into them immediately, in six months from now, we may see that, you know, we need to do more. And even on, you know, with the probation pretrial, I would offer that, and I know obviously, some of the callers might not see it that way, but if we have those community services for folks under that pretrial element, then, you know, we ought to look at kind of some equity in, you know, and again, we're not talking about people that are dismembered. Some are in the, in the public defender's program, some are in the probation's, you know, portion of this. And I think having bus passes, why wouldn't it be important for folks that are in probation supervision? I mean, I don't know. And that's the conversation I think we ought to have some more discussion around, and again, I'm not going to belabor today, these were consent items, but it's important, and I wanted to make those comments. So that's what I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Supervisor Natoli, thank you for bringing this up, those points, and I agree with you. It seems like we have made a lot of progress in just kind of shifting the focus, shifting a perspective and approach on things, and I do think these, think these are both great programs. I disagree with the callers, and the fundamental role of probation is completely different from the Public Defender's Office, but I think we have two offices here in Sacramento County that are working together in terms of better assessments and monitoring while at the same time providing supports pretrial, and I think we've done some really good things. So I would certainly echo Supervisor Natoli's points. I'm curious, and maybe if Chief Yarber's still on the phone, I mean, any indications from the Judicial Council that they would, are looking at continued funding for this pretrial programs for probation, if you're still on the phone?
So, yes, I am still here. Apologies, I did get disconnected briefly. So I believe it's Senate Bill 129 is part of the budget, is allocating funds statewide for pretrial services. We've done some analysis of the allocations, and I want to say we expect perhaps 1.6 to 1.8, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of funding, 1.6 million to 1.8 million as it relates to funding to continue our efforts. And so we'll be assessing, you know, our own operations, try to ensure, again, that we're able to fully live up to the capacity that those funds might provide to us in the way of both assessments and monitoring for our clients in the community.
Great, thank you, Chief, and so we'll obviously be keeping our eye on that, and hopefully that will provide us with some additional opportunities to not only continue the efforts that we're seeing, but also maybe expand them like Supervisor Natoli mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but Amanda Benson, it was mentioned that our interim public defender is on the line. I would like to give her an opportunity, again, I know I spoke and sort of Supervisor Desmond, but if she wanted to add anything to the conversation we heard from Chief Yarber, based upon the question I posed, but I would want to give her the opportunity to weigh in as well. Thanks.
Yes, hello, this is Amanda Benson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our program is separate, so I wanted to just confirm what the caller said. Our program was developed in 2018. It's very different than what probation provides, and it's complementary in the sense that we do different things. We provide different services, and we specifically with this funding plan to work with probation to step people off of their pretrial probation program. So that requires some collaboration and communication because we, of course, are always advocating for the least restrictive form of supervision or no supervision, if that's appropriate. We obviously always are going to advocate for more services, and that's where we believe people are less likely to reoffend, people are more likely to reappear in court if they have the supportive services. So I know that some of the callers, the word complementary was bothersome to them, and I understand that, but we are separate programs, but because we have, we are working with the same people, we do have to collaborate or communicate to try to get people off of their, their pretrial who should not be on it, who should be at a lower level. I appreciate all the comments of Supervisor Natoli. We certainly want to keep this program going. We certainly want to expand it. We think it is successful, and we're going to do everything we can to, to make it successful. And other than that, I have no other comments unless anybody has a question.
Madam Chair, Amanda, I would, thank you for being on the line as well. Just, there was a reference made, and maybe it's a detail that doesn't rise to the same level of significance, but I think it goes with some of the caller comments, that this item was mistitled, and I think to your point about being a separate program, which I think, you know, we, the board recognized that, would you have, given the opportunity, would you have offered a different titling for the way this was characterized? Obviously, the money is going to come to your department for the uses outlined, but I'm just curious on that point.
Um, yeah, I, the money is coming from the Superior Court, and that money is associated with probation's pretrial pilot program. And so I think there was some confusion there about maybe that probation's co-opting our, our program, and so I'm glad we're making it clear that there are two separate programs that do two different things. I, I don't know how else I would have ordered it, but if there was, you know, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, but, but it's clear, certainly in the recommended actions, that the memorandum of understanding or agreement is with the public defender and the Superior Court. or agreement is with the public defender and the Superior Court. So it's not, you're not under the auspices of probation department in administering your program. It's under, obviously, Bruce is the agency deputy, but you're separate and apart in that respect. So I just wanted to point that out, too, so.
Yes, that's correct. We're separate, and we have a separate agreement with the Superior Courts.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I believe we have other public comments? We do. For item 30. Please transfer callers for item 30, please.
Hi, yes.
Would you please turn the meeting down in the background?
Yes.
And start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Okay, I'm commenting on item 30 and item 36.
Okay.
For item, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Please start your public comment.
Okay. For item 30, if this money is being used for injection, please be aware that the clinical trials for COVID-19 for children will not be completed until 2024. If your child has had COVID, 100 studies have shown natural immunity, over 100 studies have shown natural immunity is robust and long-lasting. According to the CDC, COVID-19 is noticeably milder than influenza for kids. There has been no long-term safety testing of these injections for kids. Kids have 99.997% survival rate from COVID-19. Less than 1% of kids with COVID require hospitalization. The CDC says that heart inflammation, excuse me, blood clots, and Guillain-Barre syndrome are known risks of these injections. The makers slash producers of the injections and the CDC say the experimental shots do not prevent infection or transmission. So getting your child vaccinated does not protect others. All injections have an insert. However, these injections do not have an insert because they are still under emergency use authorization. So continuing to fund items for COVID and schools and children ages 0 to 19, it just doesn't make sense. That ends my comment for item 30.
Thank you. Please proceed with 36.
For 36, I have a question. What proof or evidence does the board, public health, or any other agency have which confirms that the meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees? I'm curious if you guys have any evidence of this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please send the next caller.
Yes.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Okay, I'm calling in for items 30 and 34. So item 30, I'm requesting a no vote. A million dollars is a lot of money to not have an itemized breakdown of intent, and there's no clear boundaries here on how the goal of using the funding to ensure schools are safe will be quantified. Most importantly, though, looking into where the million dollars comes from, the trail traces back to ARPA funding, basically federal funding going to SCOE, with the county acting as a pass-through. The worry is that the federally imposed strings on the money include following future federal recommendations, which are presently unknown and could be oppressive. Reading the CDC Crisis Response Cooperative document that outlines the stipulations for all funding expectations under ARPA, any recipient of said funds, regardless of how many boards the money passes through before it lands in the hands of the spender, agrees to, one, comply with the existing and/or future directives and guidance from the Secretary regarding control of the spread of COVID-19, and, three, assist the United States government in the implementation and enforcement of federal orders related to quarantine and isolation. The definitions of quarantine and isolation are not listed. By accepting this money, you are accepting a bribery from the federal government. It's how the CDC can make a recommendation, and then suddenly locals, including school boards, adopt it. We expect you to vote no. If legal counsel or the ARPA committee fail to notify you of the strings attached, voting no is not the way to go today. Do not accept this bribe from the feds for future compliance when it comes to our children. If your answer on taking it anyway is hell else will we pay for building out the workforce for testing a vaccination as listed in this document, then you are gambling the future of our children for money right now that is not truly needed. If you don't follow the recommendations to build out for testing a vaccination, then you don't need the money anyway. The money for internship programs can come from elsewhere, so long as there are no strings attached like there is here. Thank you. That's for 30. And then for 34, has that item been read in?
Could you please read item 34 into the record?
Item 34 is the, acting as the Sacramento Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority, retroactive authorization to apply for and accept Emergency Rental Assistance Program Round Two, funding in the amount of $43,366,136 from the United States Department of Treasury, and to enter a contract with the State Department of Housing and Community Development to accept Emergency Rental Assistance Program Round Two, funding in the amount of $28,963.72 for a total amount of $72,329.208. Apply for and accept any future ERAP funds the U.S. Treasury or HCD may award to the county and enter into and amend the contract accordingly. Amend contract with the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento up to $72,329,208 to administer the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Approve the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento budget for the administration of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and approve an appropriation adjustment requesting the amount of $28,669,000, and, I'm sorry, $669.31. Please proceed with your comment. You have two minutes. Hello, ma'am? Are you still on the line? If you're speaking, we cannot hear you. I'm going to have staff get that person back on the line. If you could just give me a few minutes. Hello, caller? Hello, caller?
Yes.
Oh, please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for hearing our comment. I urge you to vote no on this funding. The parameters are unclear on what the funding will be used for, and the language is loose as to how it will impact our children and our schools. We do need not, we do not need to accept money from the federal government, which could push us into behaviors, policies, and programs that we may not otherwise do. Language of this proposal includes this statement. One of the goals of the funding is to ensure schools are safe for full-time in-person attendance. Safety means many different things to different people. We need transparency on what this proposal includes, especially when it comes to our children, and this funding allocation is anything but transparent. Please, let's have some integrity, discern for ourselves what is in our best interest, and decide on a local level how we want to proceed. Vote no on this federal funding. We do not need it, nor the strings attached. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have one more caller in the queue.
Hello, caller? Hello, caller?
Hello.
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes. Okay, we can't hear if you are commenting. So if you could find a way to get some where we can hear your comment? They hung up. Chairperson fast. And that concludes your public comments. Okay, that concludes your public comment. It looked like there was someone in 34, but there isn't. Thank you.
Okay, and I think I believe Siobhan Katari is on the phone. I was going to ask a couple of questions, if I could, regarding item 30.
Yes, I'm on the phone.
There were a couple of comments that I received via email prior to our meeting and then today regarding where the money is intended to be used. I was wondering if you could explain it for the benefit of the public.
Sure, one moment. So basically, the state of California Department of Public Health was awarded some ARPA dollars to be able to enhance our workforce development for public health. And this workforce development allows us to hire additional staff, but also partner with other organizations, in this case, the Sacramento Office of Ed, to be able to build out our capacity, not only to do education and build capacity of the workforce, but to support COVID-19 testing and vaccination coordination. And this would create an internship program to support youth in the high school to be able to ensure that, that we can meet these needs. And so just, I wanted to answer the caller's question, which with regards to the strings attached, and, you know, all federal dollars obviously come with some strings, so want to acknowledge that. I wanted to also say that that, those strings are really separate, though, than the requirements around whether people should be vaccinated. So if there are requirements that either states or federal governments put into place around vaccinations, those are really separate than willingness to accept ARPA dollars. I think that's important to distinguish. So this $1 million will be used by SCOE to support students for community health programs to create a workforce and a pathway into public health. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I think what I heard was to, to support a workforce and also to promote testing and vaccines in the high schools?
It is, it is related to COVID, so not necessarily to support testing and vaccines within the high schools, but ARPA is related to COVID, to COVID recovery and response. So it is really to support the public health workforce in the vaccination and testing efforts, if that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I don't have any other members of the board in the queue to speak. I would like to go on record as abstaining on item 30. I think there were some, there was information that came in, and I have questions, and I'm going to abstain at this time. I believe we're ready to call for a vote.
A motion by Member Desmond and a second by a Member Kennedy. However, I do believe we have one commenter in person for item 47.
Oh, I just got it. Thank you.
47 is separate.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a timed item. I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's a timed item.
Okay.
Well, we do have a comment from Supervisor Natoli, though.
Just a question. I want to be sure, incorporate into the consent motion that direction around item 16, that that is for a one-year with two one-year extensions. And as we discussed, I didn't, you know, again, since we're voting, I want to be sure it's concurrence by the board and what I had offered, so, okay.
I believe we all concurred, and I believe the county executive confirmed that was doable.
She did, yeah. I'm okay with that. That's fine.
Thank you, Don.
I'm sorry. Motion by a Member Desmond and a second by a Member Kennedy with the amendment to item number 16.
Please vote.
And unanimous vote with Member Frost abstaining for item number 30.
Okay, next item, please.
Item number 42 is a presentation of a resolution honoring John Pierce upon the occasion of his retirement after 33 years of county service.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. Sherri Thompson-Duart with the Department of Airports. I'm here to say a few words as we honor and recognize John Pierce after 33 years of dedicated county service. And I will say that the entire airport wanted to be here this morning, and of course, we couldn't let them all be here, but we do have a good showing behind us that are here to support John. So John Pierce will retire from the Sacramento County Department of Airports on January 1st, 2022, with 33 years of honorable service. John began his distinguished career with Sacramento County as a fire ops worker, with airport rescue and firefighting, as an airport firefighter, operations worker, and aircraft fueler. Recognized for his expertise and unrelenting work ethic, John was quickly promoted to the position of Airport Operations Officer and assigned to Mather Airport, where he had the responsibility of day-to-day operations. From there, John was the clear choice to take on more responsibilities and was promoted to Airport Manager and assigned back at International Airport as the Security Coordinator after the terrorist attacks of 9/11. After that, John would go on to serve as Sacramento International Airport's Access Control and Communication Center Manager, Landsite Operations Manager, and then on to the General Aviation Manager. During this time, as the General Aviation Manager, John would lead the development operation of all three Sacramento County GA airports, Executive Airport Franklin Field and Mather. As the Operations Manager for the GA airports, John was involved and oversaw numerous vital projects, to include planning and coordination of eight California capital airshows, the development of Mather's long runway overlay project, the installation of Mather's CAT-2 instrument landing system, the expansion and rehabilitation of numerous old hangars on the former military base, and the development and addition of a flight school, just to name a few. Throughout John's distinguished career, he oversaw many dignitary visits, including his most recent high-profile coordination on September 13th, 2021, with the very short notice visit of President Joe Biden and the California Governor Gavin Newsom aboard Air Force One. John has been a mentor and a friend to all of us who have worked with him throughout his many years of county service. It is with great pride that we celebrate John's many accomplishments. It is with great pride that we celebrate John's many accomplishments. John leaves a lasting legacy of dedication to duty. His service to the county of Sacramento has touched many lives, and his commitment to improvement stands as an example for others to follow in the many successful projects he has completed for the Sacramento County Department of Airports. It is my honor to congratulate John Pierce on his well-deserved retirement and wish him nothing but happiness and health as he starts his exciting next chapter.
So to you, John, I say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a couple of words, John?
Well, I have to say good morning. I've had a fabulous career. Not bad for a little kid out of Oak Park. I think not too shabby. I really love this community, born and raised here. So I can't think of any other department in the county. I mean, there's a lot of fabulous ones, but the airport, you see everything, every kind of person, family member, sad, crying, happy. So it's a good indication of how well this community actually does as far as providing this amazing airport that we have. And I've seen it from the two little old terminals to what we have today, and I'm sure there's plenty more to come as we obviously continue to grow. And as one old guy said, hey, 30 years with the county, after that, you just keep your mouth shut. So it's been long enough. It's time for me to go and make room for some of these new kids that are coming up. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to acknowledge me and for the rest of the young kids that are watching today, that they also work very hard and see that there's a lot to do here in the county of Sacramento. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Before you go, Supervisor Kennedy had some comments.
Thank you, John. First of all.
I didn't do it.
Well, I believe the five of us could learn from your rule of keeping your mouth shut more.
I don't know if we could learn.
All except for Mr. Desmond, of course. But no, I want to thank you for your service. You know, it's been a long time. And, you know, where you really touched me was as a former Oak Parker myself, you know, way to go and way to represent. So thank you, and you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Natoli.
Don't go away, John. We're not done with you.
The bridge? You're not going to talk about the bridge, are you?
No, no, no. We won't talk about the bridge, so. But, no, John, thank you for your, certainly your dedicated service. And I think as the list of things that you were a part of was read off, and certainly the reference to, I think, your work as certainly an employee of the county, but I think, more precisely, I think the mentoring that you've provided, certainly as you've advanced in your career, and I think those opportunities, certainly upon your retirement, obviously, that opens up opportunity for someone to, you know, to aspire to the position you hold. But beyond that, I think just in your daily work, the folks you've touched, and you mentioned general public, obviously, with your, you know, your work out at International. But you've had, you know, you've touched all the airports and the airport system with, you know, projects that have improved safety, they've improved access, and, you know, all of those are portals in and out of this community and, you know, serve important movement of people, but certainly of goods and service delivery to our community. So I want to compliment you. I mean, again, for someone who's 43 years in now.
Well, you knocked on my door when you were running, so that's how long I've known you to be up here. So I kind of had to say, okay, he came to my door.
But nonetheless, I just want to certainly thank you for your service. It's been said well, and the resolution was read. But wish you well in, you know, in your life. I know, obviously, you're going to, hopefully, you're going to remain in this community, continue to be someone who people can look up to and to refer to and, you know, and call upon from time to time. Because as you said, folks that are coming behind you will, you know, that wisdom and expertise you've picked up along the way, you take that with you, but you leave some of that, you know, for others to follow in your footsteps. So congratulations, Godspeed, and thank you for your dedicated service, John.
Thank you, Dawn. Supervisor Natoli, I really appreciate it. It's been nice working with you, too.
Yeah, likewise. I've enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your commitment to the county and for your dedicated leadership. And it's obvious to me that you are loved, so you'll be a hard act to follow, apparently.
Yeah, I'll miss it. It's been fabulous. It's been really, really fabulous to spend this time with you guys.
Best of everything.
And my other family members.
Is that your family back there?
No, yeah, they're my family.
Oh, best wishes for a great retirement and a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you all, too. Appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Oh, get a picture.
Yeah, they want to, yes, you should come down and get pictures if you want. Feel free to. If you want to get a picture with everyone, we have plenty of time. Please.
Alma says no.
Alma said no.
Do we have a board resolution for him? I thought we'd all signed a resolution. Did he get?
I believe it's.
Yeah.
I believe it's.
Oh.
The clerks are, have it all under control, they told me.
Oh, okay.
It's being delivered, I think.
FedEx?
We're going to make him come back for it.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
Oh, wow, we got everyone. That's great.
Well, thank you, John.
Okay, now I think we have off-agenda comments. We do have one person in chambers for off-agenda, and his name is Ryan Harris. Do we have anyone on the phone also?
Yes, we do. We have one caller.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Harris.
Hey, you remember my last name. Good morning.
I know. I got it right today.
I appreciate that a lot.
I tried hard.
I do have some for the overhead here. I really just want to go back to work and peace how it was before I was targeted for disability.
Okay, are you beginning your public comment now?
Well, I'm going to begin as soon as I'm aware that this is available.
I'm sorry, the rotate button is right next to the, to get closer to the document.
They said about 36% of callers said is 36% of African-Americans are in our jail right now. That's what a caller had said when they came in. Makes sense why I'm the only black one in this room.
Go ahead, sir.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a fair share of time now that I'm able to go?
You may begin. I'll reset it for you, just to be, it'll be a Christmas gift.
I think you have had more than what we generally allot for public comment and.
Mr. Kennedy, if you send a man to go get arrested, the least you can do is return his phone call when he survives.
Only spoke for two. You can check the time. It was two minutes, but you had told me it was more.
Public comment is just that. He's allowed to make a public comment, but the board should not engage in the dialogue. How long is your video?
It's two minutes.
That was not the video, by the way. So if you knew it wasn't appropriate, why'd you do it, right? You intentionally break rules as if you're above the law. Meanwhile, Ann Edwards is permitted to discipline me for following them. Let me read an email from a county supervisor. Ryan, you started to shadow on the phones around January 24th, 2018, and are now taking phone calls. And yet, Ann Edwards disciplined me because I did not take phone calls in 2017, a whole year before I was even trained. If you want another example, you guys say to contact HR. So let me read this email that I wrote HR. Said, hello, I have a question about a policy. What do I do if I have a restraining order on another individual in the same building? HR replied and said, if you have a restraining order on an individual, you need to provide a copy to your program manager. I did, just as HR said, as you guys had mentioned. And again, Ann Edwards took away three days paid for me for composing and sending an email to my program manager regarding restraining order. Where's the end? When does it stop, you know? So why are you guys okay with them firing me, but then continuing to promote and protect those that are willfully neglecting policies, exposing welfare recipients' information, and allows this to take place and happen to employees in the workplace? If you didn't see that picture, that was a person who had, the supervisor, had wrapped my hand in tape to the phone to tell me to pick up the phone faster. So I'm just curious. You know, I'm lucky it wasn't a rope around my neck this time. It was just tape around my hand. But where does it end?
Thank you.
It's ridiculous.
Please transfer the next caller. Hi, caller. Hello? Caller, please turn the meeting, please turn the meeting down in the background.
Yes.
And start your public comment. You have two minutes.
I'm calling to publicly inform everyone who is listening that people with disabilities who are not able to use a face covering are still being denied access to the building. When people come to the podium, they take off their face covering. Chair Frost, your medical needs are accepted. Why are my medical needs not accepted? I thought equity was important to all of you. According to Sergeant Muller from the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, Public Health said they would not discriminate against those with disabilities who cannot use a face covering. Sergeant Muller also stated that the county council was the one responsible for denying the individuals with disabilities access to the building. For public record and to ensure that the entire Board of Supervisors is aware, the Department of Justice put out a press release statement, and it reads, quote, "Civil rights protections and responsibilities still apply even during emergencies. They cannot be waived," end quote. This statement applies to federal agencies, state and local governments, and recipients of federal financial assistance. The Americans with Disabilities Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. Title III specifically states, quote, "Public accommodations must comply with basic nondiscrimination requirements that prohibit exclusion, segregation, and unequal treatment. Phone comments and written comments are not equal treatment. Therefore, county council and/or whomever is responsible for denying access to people with disabilities is breaking the law. Which one of you board supervisors is willing to help us with disabilities? Which one of you will actually uphold your oath of protecting our rights? No ordinance that is passed by a local agency is valid if it violates the California Constitution and the Constitution of the United States. What you guys are doing is criminal. You are breaking the law, and it's also dangerous." That's the end of my comment.
Thank you. I believe we have one more commenter. Please transfer the next caller.
Hi, caller. Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Oh, right now?
Yes, please start your comment.
Thank you. Good morning again, one more time, Board of Supervisors, Mackenzie Wilson. Except for this time, I think I'm just calling as a community member and a community organizer. I've been community organizing in this town for probably about like eight years now, actually. And so I called today with some suggestions on how to make the BOS and the decision-making processes, as well as the place and the space, more accessible to this community so that we can bring our voices and have them heard. First, I would like to talk about language. The, like, the other day, I came in during the Truth Act forum, and we had ASL interpreters, which I thought was really cool. You know, we have them during these big sessions. But the truth is, is that when we don't have them every, every board meeting, what we're doing is excluding an entire population of people who cannot participate. It's almost as if we're under the assumption that they're not going to show up, which should seek volumes to us about what kind of democratic processes we have. I would also like to talk about the fact that we need these meetings translated, and how to do that live as well should be taken into account. I appreciate that we started making some evening meetings. Maybe we should figure out ways to incorporate community in the decision of how these agendas are put together, considering that community wants to come in and talk about certain items, while others, we do trust your expertise. And so how to, like, put those in spaces and places that allow for the maximization of participation. I also have a thing about the agenda. So as a community organizer, we get the agenda on Fridays before the BOS meeting, which means that, like, people's free labor, and I'm not, and we're only one organization, so I can tell you about the countless ones who only have a weekend to run around and pull together everything they need in order to be able to, like, share the information with the public, mobilize folks, and give folks the tools and the resources they need to even know that they can show up.
You have 15 seconds.
No problem. Free parking. I think that the parking should be free. It's really necessary. People cannot, I spent five hours there the other day and spent $30. Not everybody has that. And then my final one. Language times agenda, free parking. Oh, and I would like to follow up and have the board maybe have a, do a presentation, come forward and talk about the participatory budgeting that was presented by the People's Budget. I think that that was presented by the People's Budget and never touched again. And that just might be from my lack of ignorance, but again, that comes from communication and transfers on the board with the community to let people know.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, let people know what's going on. And so I would like some sort of follow-up on the efforts of the county to make sure the participatory budgeting is in fact a priority for this county. Yeah, I hope you take the suggestions and send them. You guys have my email if you'd like to talk further on them. Have a great day. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And that concludes your comments, your off-agenda comments.
Okay, thank you. And next item, please.
Item number 43 is the 2021 Annual Domestic Violence Death Review Team Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dawn Bleday, and I'm the Assistant Chief Deputy at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office over the Sex Crimes and Family Violence Bureau. I also have here representatives from WEAVE and the Family Justice Center, who I would like to reserve time for to speak after I present the report. The Domestic Violence Death Review Team is a subcommittee of the Sacramento County Domestic Violence Coordinating Council was formed in the spring of 1998. We meet monthly to debrief domestic violence-related homicides and murder-suicides with the goal of providing evidence-based recommendations regarding the need for services and intervention in domestic violence in Sacramento County with the goal of reducing the number of these tragic deaths. This is the 20th report, and it covers a period of 2019 to 2021. Because the deaths cannot be discussed by the team until after criminal proceedings have completed, the year of the data does not necessarily reflect the commission of the crime date. I can tell you that for the 18 cases discussed in this report, three occurred in 2016, five occurred in 2017, two in 2018, three in 2019, three in 2020, and two in 2021. That doesn't mean that that's the number of homicides that happened that year. That means that we were able to discuss those homicides during the course of this term by the death review team. What have we seen as a result of what we've looked at during that time period? Well, domestic violence has increased. The Family Justice Center and WEAVE have data that can show you the numbers of people that have sought services for domestic violence. The severity of violence has increased, as we've seen at the District Attorney's Office with cases that have come our way. There's a number of repeat offenders and offenders with violence in their background that has also increased. During the period covered by this report, an average of 1,638 cases involving domestic violence are filed by the District Attorney's Office each year. So between the October 2019 and October 21, the team reviewed 18 different domestic violence-related deaths. Those, in those cases, five of the scenarios are murder-suicides. Those, in those cases, five of the scenarios are murder-suicides. The review of the cases reaffirms conclusions from past years, that domestic violence impacts all ages, races, religions, and economic backgrounds, that abusers come from all walks of lives and neighborhoods, that weapons used to kill are varied, but the consistent themes that came through in our study of all of these deaths was themes of substance abuse and mental health issues that dominate these factual scenarios. Of particular concern to the team and should be of concern to the county is the impact these crimes have on the children of these families and all the families where violence is present in the home. I'll go quickly through the categorical breakdown of the cases that we reviewed. The ages of the victims ranged from 23 to 83, the perpetrators 24 to 90. The racial or ethnic background of the victims, six were Asian Pacific Islander, three African-American, eight Caucasian, one Hispanic. The racial or ethnic background of the perpetrators, six Asian Pacific Islander, four African-American, six Caucasian, and two Hispanic. Children left without one or both parents. These 18 cases resulted in 42 children in this county being left without one or both parents due to domestic violence-related homicide. In seven of the 18 cases, domestic violence had been previously reported to law enforcement. In eight of the 18 cases, there was prior domestic violence that was not reported to law enforcement but described by surviving family or friends. In five of the 18 cases, there was strangulation committed by the perpetrator on the current or a prior victim. We know that the most lethal time in a domestic violence relationship is when the victim leaves the abuser, and in five of the 18 cases, the victim had left or was in the process of leaving when the homicide occurred. Of the 18 cases, 12 showed that victims had drug or alcohol problems, 13 of the perpetrators showed drug or alcohol abuse, many testing positive at the time they committed the crime. Substances ranged from alcohol to methamphetamine, cocaine, prescription medications, mushrooms, and marijuana. Of the 18 cases, nine were perpetrated with a firearm, five guns were registered, four unregistered. Other weapons included metal poles, rods, hammer, saw, sledgehammer, knife, and a guitar. Of the 18 cases, 11 perpetrators had a history of suicide, suicidal attempts, or suicidal ideation. So what were our findings as a team during this period of time covered by the report? Well, as is evidenced by what I just mentioned, mental health issues are a critical component of this dynamic. Suicide attempts or ideation were present in a significant number of the perpetrators. This is further evidence of the connection is also the murder-suicide, the high rate we have here of five cases during this period that were murder-suicide scenarios. Substance abuse by both victim and perpetrator is also a significant causative factor in domestic violence and should be considered in services, education, and intervention programming. Gun possession and use by abusers continues to dominate the factual scenarios, and resources should be devoted to ensuring removal of firearms when allowed by lawful orders. The number of domestic violence homicide cases where strangulation was present is significant. We need to continue to educate first responders, medical professionals, law enforcement, and service providers, and prosecutors about the lethal nature of strangulation and the correlation between strangulation and domestic violence homicide. We have a broad definition for case identification for the Domestic Violence Death Review Team. Any homicide motivated by dating frustration, inter-family relationships, and interpersonal dating or marital violence. When a jealous lover kills a former or current dating partner of an ex, it may not necessarily be categorized by the law enforcement agency as domestic violence, but it is, at its heart, domestic violence. One of the issues the team has is making sure that it gets all of the relevant cases to discuss, so that we can have the best data with which to make recommendations and findings. We need to ensure that law enforcement is referring cases to the team, because often the coroner does not know the factual backstory in order to flag a case for the domestic violence connections. So we're working with our law enforcement partners to make sure that those cases find their way to us. Suicidal and homicide abusers pose a danger to their victims, the community, and law enforcement. We saw this incur of the, occur in the death of Tara O'Sullivan in 2019 when responding to a domestic violence call. Again, this wasn't flagged as a domestic violence homicide, but that's in fact was at the heart of the incident that led to her death. What are our recommendations? Based on what we saw, what we've studied, and the data we collected, with regard to mental health and suicide, increase services to offenders and victims, prioritize wellness of children impacted by domestic violence relationships of adults in their homes. Find and fund early intervention programs, providing support to families, education, anger management resources, before violence escalates or become a part of the domestic violence relationship. Substance use and abuse. Support for substance abuse treatment, intervention, and education will serve both victims and perpetrators of domestic violence. Gun possession. We recommend high-risk teams from local law enforcement working together to remove firearms from those who are unlawfully possessing them. Strangulation. Continued training and consistency in use of the Sacramento County Strangulation Protocol that this board endorsed when we came before the board last year is critical in identifying these cases and intervening with perpetrators who use this lethal means of violence against their victims. Referral of cases to the DVDRT team by local law enforcement. As I mentioned, we want to make sure that those get to us so that we can present them to you. Reducing danger through prevention and education. Children who grew up with abuse in the home often believe violence is the means of resolving conflict. They have higher drug and alcohol use, mental health issues, and criminality. Expanding services directed at this need is critical in reducing homicide deaths due to domestic violence. Embedded advocates. The Weave statistics, and you'll hear about those in a moment, show that the embedded advocates in local law enforcement agencies provide immediate access for a survivor to safety plan, services, and it's a way to reduce fatal outcomes in domestic violence This team continues to work actively with all of our partners to better address the issues of domestic violence in Sacramento in the hopes of reducing the number of these domestic violence-related deaths. And with that, I'd like to introduce, unless the board has questions, I'd like to introduce Allison Kephart from Weave.
We don't seem to have any questions. Yes, we do. Supervisor Desmond.
Yes.
Well, while she's coming down, thank you, Dawn, and I know we have more to hear from you, and I appreciate your work, of course. I'm just looking at some of the, some of the charts in the report here, and on Attachment 1, Page 6, the ZIP codes of clients in the city of Sacramento with neighborhoods. I'm just, I'm just looking at some of these, and I think it's important because obviously the city of Sacramento and the county will have some different approaches, a lot of different roles they play depending on where it is. But several of these areas, Arden, American River College, Rosemont, Foothill Farms, those are actually in unincorporated areas, not within the city. So I just think that's important because I don't want us to lose sight. You know, you look at the chart above that, and it indicates that, you know, half of the, half of the clients served are within the unincorporated area, but I think if you make that adjustment, I think it makes it clear that a significantly higher number of folks in the unincorporated area are being affected by it, and I think that should inform, obviously, our approach within the county. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good observation. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
I think I did actually have some slides. I'm not sure if we have them available that we had submitted.
I do not have any slides and notes for this item.
Okay, if not, that's fine. I have them, so I can refer to them while I talk with you. So again, my name is Allison Kephart. I'm the Chief Legal and Compliance Officer with Weave, which is a domestic violence services organization here in Sacramento that I'm sure you are all very familiar with. So my role at Weave is in part to guide our legal services program, so that's providing services to victims and survivors of domestic violence, along with sexual assault and sex trafficking. Specifically, we work around family law issues primarily. So we see quite a bit of intersection with folks who interact with the DA's office, and then also folks who interact with the Family Justice Center, who you'll hear from in a little bit, too. So as Dawn mentioned, this report that's in front of you actually spans three, three separate one-year periods, so, and it focuses on a couple of different things. We really talked about, based on our recommendations, the prevalence of things like strangulation, and we were really curious to see the intersection between survivors or victims who are interacting with law enforcement and who are also seeking services from community-based organizations like Weave and the Family Justice Center. What's interesting about that is what we see from our data is probably only about a 20% overlap. So when I look at the number of domestic violence victims specifically that Weave served in these three one-year periods that are covered by this report, we served about 5,000 victims, again, who have identified as domestic violence, so that's separate from our sexual assault or sex trafficking survivors. And about, somewhere around 1,000 of them or just under 1,000 of them are folks who we have then referred to law enforcement, and that's going to be based on what a survivor is telling us they want or need. What that's also telling us is that we have a lot of survivors who aren't interacting with law enforcement and therefore aren't being connected to, to potentially prosecution of crimes, things like that. So we need to be looking at, and some of the recommendations from this report, look at what are ways that we can support those survivors who are not intersecting with law enforcement for whatever reason. Some of the suggestions that came forward around things like early intervention are a great example of that. For example, we track the number of families, I'm looking for it on my slides, excuse me. We track the number of families over those three one-year periods where we were aware of minor children involved in, in the situation, and across the three years, we have around 400 families. So 400 families, and, you know, if you take the average of two to three children per family, that's quite a few children that are being impacted, and those are only the ones that we are aware of, where, where a client, we've had enough interaction with a client to be aware that they have children. So the prevention and education piece of the recommendations is huge. I know that, that the Family Justice Center supports prevention and education work. Weave also has a very robust prevention and education process system. We have embedded folks in schools. We have a number of social media channels to reach folks, to reach children of all different ages, to reach parents, educators. So those are very important components. The other important component that I wanted to talk about is both mental health supports. We see approximately 50% of the folks who are reaching out to us for some form of domestic violence services, we are referring them to mental health services, whether that's counseling through Weave. We do offer therapeutic counseling and peer support counseling, or whether that's referring them to mental health services outside of our organization, so other providers in the community. But that is a huge component, both for survivors, and we know, we hear about it from, from other community organizations, for perpetrators, too. And then the, the last important thing that I wanted to speak about was, again, as, as Dawn mentioned, the firearm issue and firearm possession and relinquishment. That is something that, in my role as, as an attorney who helps support victims who are pursuing domestic violence restraining orders through the family court, it's very present, because in those situations, unlike some of the cases that the DA's office handles, it's oftentimes the victim, the perpetrator, and the judicial officer hearing their case. So understanding that there's something of an honor system at play, asking perpetrators who are now prohibited from possessing firearms to voluntarily relinquish their firearms with very little ability to follow up on whether they've done that, is, poses a significant risk to victims and their families. It also poses a risk, as, as Dawn mentioned, to law enforcement, to anybody else who is supporting victims and their families. So the, I wholly support the recommendations that are in the report. I think they are meaningful, thoughtful ways that the county can continue to tackle domestic violence in this, in this community and all of our communities, and I appreciate your time and thoughtfulness considering this report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, so maybe we'll take the next speaker and see if we have questions later. Of course.
Ma'am, sure, just, just real quick.
Oh, sure.
Just the question I did have, when you say you do the referral for mental health services, are you finding that, one, people are accessing those services? I assume there's some tracking of that, and do, through at least the work Weave does, are you finding that timeliness is, is appropriate, so folks, you know, if they need more immediate services, they can access them? I'm just curious, kind of the experience, at least most recently, around, one, referral is appropriate, but then do they actually take advantage of it, and are they able to take advantage of it?
I think those are very good questions. I think that a majority of the folks who are referred want to take advantage, but your second question really keys in to the bigger issue, which is the availability of the services. So for example, a waitlist to get into a group therapeutic counseling through Weave could be several weeks long, and we don't have a lot of funding to offer individual counseling sessions to survivors of domestic violence, so they may need to have something that bridges that gap. And as I'm sure the board is aware, the strain on mental health services in general as a result of the pandemic has made it so that all of the providers, whether they're, they're community-based organizations like Weave or Family Justice Center, or if they are medical providers in the community, they're all stretched very thin. So the ability for someone to find services in a timely manner that are appropriate for their needs, and that are either free or low cost, or that they have some sort of, you know, insurance provider or something that can help them pay for that cost, that's a, you can see the funnel getting smaller and smaller as we talk about that.
Okay, yeah, thanks for outlining that, and I think, again, it goes to the challenges, a lot of respects that are faced by both the providers, but certainly those folks that are seeking those services, so, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
I'm Joyce Blue with the Deputy Director of the Family Justice Center. First and foremost, I have to say thank you so much for what you do. You have a tough job. I've been in Sacramento County for many, many years, and I just truly appreciate what our Board of Supervisors does for families in our community. I have been with the Family Justice Center since its inception of 2016. I have been in the field of domestic violence and child abuse prevention 40 years in October. I'm also a survivor of domestic violence. I did leave my glasses in the car, so I cannot see anything, so I'm speaking from the heart here.
Sometimes it's better from the heart.
I know, so anyways, it was, I really did want to say thank you, though, because I, people tell me sometimes I have to get a life, because I do listen to you at home on TV.
No, oh, no.
But the Family Justice Center, thank you, for those of you who have had a tour of the Family Justice Center, too. I also serve on the Death Review Team and have for many years, and I appreciate the work that Dawn does and the DA's office to put the report together, along with the whole team. The Family Justice Center concept is to have a lot of services under one building, so when a victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, elder, or child abuse can come through there and share their story one time to help reduce the trauma and get connected to those resources. We have many onsite community partners. We have a Weave advocate there who focuses on working with the elderly. We have LAU Community Development on there. We have, gosh, the Safe Center through Child Protective Services. APS is a partner, the SAC Sheriff's Detective, SAC PD Detectives, many other partners. We have a team of attorneys who do restraining orders and provide legal support, along with social workers. I'm really proud to say that since we came here last time, we started our child therapy program. So all of our services are free, and we've served 63 children who received free therapy at our program. We have our camp program where we send kids to camp. We sent nine kids this year. camp program, where we send kids to camp. We sent nine kids this year up in Truckee. They had a blast. We measured hope in that program, so I'm just putting the data together on that. They go to camp, they do a hope survey, they, I don't know what's going on out there, but something is. They do a hopes, they take a hope survey test, then they take it right after camp, and then they take it 30 days afterwards. We have a lot of offsite partners. We have a lot of partnerships with the hospitals. Our, like Dawn and Weave, our clients have really increased over the past two years due to COVID. Domestic violence is not going away, unfortunately. It's on the rise. The cases are more lethal. Our strangulation cases are really, really high. When we first opened, we had 29 cases of strangulation that was reported to us. None of us was trained. We didn't assess for it. We've all been trained in advanced courses of strangulation now, and we receive, our strangulation has gone up over 1,500%. So we received 500 to 600 reported cases a year of strangulation. It's about power and control. It's one of the most lethal forms of domestic violence. I'm glad that you supported our protocol for strangulation. We have seen, by the end of December, we will have seen about 18,000 victims of domestic violence who've come through the Family Justice Center. I'm proud to say that we have had no cases of deaths. When a client comes into the Family Justice Center, what makes us unique is they get connected immediately to a case manager and an attorney if they're there for legal services. So they have both of those people to support them and get them connected to all of the resources. About 15% of our clientele are elderly, 65 and older. I know we've had quite a few that were like 97, in their 90s, which is heartbreaking to see so many elderly, you know, come through our doors like that. I think it's almost 8,000 children under the age of 18 who have been impacted by domestic violence through our agency. About 4,000 of those are children under five. We have done a lot of training this year, based on some of the recommendations from the Death Review Report, to law enforcement, 911 dispatchers, and medical on assessing for high-risk domestic violence cases, including strangulation. We did bring a strangulation training here to Sacramento a year ago. It's about $30,000 to bring that training here. We had over 300-plus people here to be trained on it, and they took it back to their agencies and changed the way they did service to help identify strangulation. So just real quick, when a client comes in, like I said, they get connected to service. We're able to give them the legal services, the therapy they need for their children, the counseling they might need, the mental health support, and get them connected to other resources. We give a warm handoff. The ideal thing here in Sacramento is, my belief, is that all first responders are trained on identifying high-risk domestic violence. I think if those 911, that's the first link. If they're trained on strangulation and identifying for high-risk domestic violence, they can put that information into the CAD call, which would go to law enforcement before they get out to that site. They would know if there's a gun involved. They would know if there's strangulation, if the person has tried to leave before. They would know all these high-risk factors before they get out there. And then they can get that person connected to an EMT if there's been strangulation, and then to a Family Justice Center or Weave, or to a victim advocate. I thank you, again, for your support. We welcome Faith Whitmore as the CE. That's the problem right there. The power went out.
Oh, wow. Let's take a recess. How about that?
I'm done.
Okay, I.
Thanks, Joyce.
Joyce, I'm so sorry. That's fine. Thank you.